I stole, I stole my son's band and sang with them Saturday night.
She pulled some mom privileges.
I'm mom to the whole band, so.
Sorry, sir.
I need all those changes.
Excellent.
And I emailed Mike Genn.
All the confidence of Mike Genn for the.
For the application. So, and there was one of those that had a blank date in it, Jason, you remember that? It was the date of the.
Remember the time.
Agreement or something.
Well, there was one, because remember one said it was like a five year and the other said 10?
Well, I changed all those too.
Okay.
No, but there was a blank in there that it says something about, it wasn't a default provision. It said something about, you know, an agreement, a right-of-way agreement signed on this date, blank.
Oh, it's probably the same as.
So I just changed it to read the same date as this license agreement.
Yeah.
So we don't have to worry about going back.
That's probably what it was, they probably refer to each other.
Yeah, I only had two questions, Jason, and that brings me to the second one.
Hopefully they're ones that we already answered.
No, there's one.
Okay.
The application fee gonna be.
I could have swore that was all answered if there's.
No, the, the poll attachment fee each year was $20 a poll.
Yeah, yeah.
But how much were you gonna charge them for an application fee I didn't know?
I thought we did answer that, because that one, I remember, we said we matched it the other one.
I did ask Mike for some suggestions about that, by the way.
Okay.
Email about the other thing.
Let me find that, because I could have swore that was answered.
I didn't bring that file, so.
On November 19th, let me see if it's answered. Oh my God, there's so many emails.
And you know what the point of that fee is, Jason? To be able to, uh.
For the, it's to process the application, right?
For you guys to hire engineers and do whatever you need to do to figure out whether, whether you can put this on this.
Well, that's why I, we limited to how many, they couldn't put in like 100 things in there.
Did you see this today?
White House, this came out today, then no, I did not.
Okay, this came from the Ivy Eight today, I thought you might want to see that, in terms of your sewage treatment plant.
How are they releasing a guidebook to infrastructure funding when they haven't even approved the bill yet?
Well, no, they did approve the infrastructure.
Oh, it did get approved?
Yeah, this one was approved in the fall.
I thought, I thought, I thought Mansion was holding out.
No, that's the, that's a different bill.
Okay.
That's the social spending bill, but the infrastructure bill was approved with bipartisan support in the fall, and that's the one that I think might help you with the sewage treatment.
I'm definitely gonna look through this thing.
I thought you should.
Yeah, because at the conference, they said, what made me nervous is the conference said, the, the federal government's gonna give the money out to these states and the states are gonna decide. I'm like, uh-oh, because how great of a job they did the last time they, they did something, so that has me nervous, so.
Well, and I don't know how it's all gonna work, but it seems like they're starting to give some guidelines.
So this is the White House's guidebook, not necessarily what the Illinois agreed to do.
Right, but.
Is my copy I can take?
It is.
I'll look at that tomorrow. But the other question I thought was answered, let me see if I can find it.
Is it gonna be asked again tonight, guys?
It looks like it, I thought, uh.
Somebody said Tommy's local, he's in town?
I don't know, I thought it was supposed to be here, since I talked to him last week he was. Probably was not good.
How's he doing, Dom?
Uh, I guess he's, it's, it's a slow process.
Jason, can I have that thing I gave you? I'm just gonna show it to Dom quickly. Dom, you're gonna see this in your email if you didn't look at it.
I did.
This afternoon, I gave this to Jason because this might affect the sewage treatment. And he seems to be, wanna be on top of that.
Is, what is, uh, it's not probably, no?
No.
No phone?
No.
I am, if you are done.
Call the city council meeting to order.
Augerbury, Compton, Kern.
Here.
Wieski.
Here.
Rivera.
Aye.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion and second to approve the minutes from the January 24th, 2022 regular meeting.
I move to approve the minutes from the January 24th, 2022 regular meeting.
Second.
Kern.
Aye.
Wieski.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Before we go on, uh, just so you know, Commissioner Cullen and, uh, called in is unable to, um, uh, to attend tonight because he's got some health issues. Public comments on agenda items only. Then we'll move on. I need a motion and second to approve bills as presented for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve bills as presented for payment.
Second.
Kern.
Aye.
Wieski.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
I need a motion and second to approve the raffle license application to support Oglesby Schools.
Move to approve raffle license application for support Oglesby Schools.
Second.
Kern.
Aye.
Wieski.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
I need a motion and second to approve the raffle license for the Illinois Valley Association of Realtor, retailers.
I'll make a motion to approve raffle license application for Illinois Valley Association of Realtors.
Second.
Kern.
Aye.
Wieski.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
I need a motion and second to approve the raffle license application for the Starve Rock Runners LTD.
Move to approve raffle license applications for Starve Rock Runners LTD.
Second.
Kern.
Aye.
Wieski.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Approve raffle license application for the Dickinson House Foundation.
Move to approve raffle license applications for Dickinson House Foundation.
Second.
Kern.
Aye.
Wieski.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Approve engineer, engineers payment estimate for IDOT for advanced asphalt in the amount of $218,020.20. And 82 cents.
So what this is, is, so people aren't getting their hopes up by looking at stuff here, I, I know I did talk about how we are looking to get a whole bunch of work done again this year, uh, and we are looking at that process. This is actually the payment amount for what happened last year. I am still a little strange on why we approve it here, because we actually approved it via resolution already, but that's why we have about $500,000 in our motor fuel tax fund, because this $218,000 hasn't come out yet. So that's the reason it is there. So, uh, if there's no questions, I'll make a motion to approve the engineer's payment estimate from IDOT for advanced asphalt in the amount of $218,020.20.
Second.
Kern.
Aye.
Wieski.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Uh, next is approved 020722R1, a resolution of the City of Oglesby, LaSalle County, Illinois, authorizing the city attorney to institute condemnation proceedings for LaSalle County, Illinois parcel number 18 dash 25 dash 416 dash 000.
So, since our last meeting, I reached out to that owner again, hoping he would be cooperative three times, he's never returned the call once. So I did move forward with the appraisal request, and then I asked Amy to put this resolution on the table tonight, so you could authorize me to start the condemnation proceedings. I think we need to turn the heat up, because we're under a deadline here, as you know.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'd like to move to approve 020722R1, a resolution of the City of Oglesby, LaSalle County, Illinois, authorizing the city attorney to institute condem, condemnation proceedings for LaSalle County, Illinois parcel number 18 dash 25 dash 416 dash 000.
Second.
Kern.
Aye.
Wieski.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Number 13, place on file poll attachment fee agreement between Surf Air Wireless and the City of Oglesby.
So, what both of these are, there's two of them, there's a poll attachment fee and a right-of-way agreement. This doesn't put us into any kind of agreement with what they're doing for the city or anything, it just establishes, uh, means for how they would pay us for any poll attachment fees or right-of-ways. We've gone back quite a bit on this, just because we don't have one of these type of agreements in the city right now, so we, we have a couple contracts for, like, attachments to the water tower or something like that, but nothing has a revolving basis where somebody would put in an application, have a timeline of how long that application gets approved, and, and what the fees are, and that's what these do here. So basically, there is, there's one for the, uh, attachment to, uh, for poll attachments, and then one is for where they would be able to access the right-of-way if they were gonna put some underground cabling in anywhere or something like that. I'll be honest, the goal, we've been working on this for a while, the goal is, once we kind of get the fee thing kind of figured out, they are looking to come to the city council meeting and give a presentation about what everything would entail, request a construction schedule, and all kinds of things like that. So, that's what this is, just the, the legal stuff as far as the fee rates.
And just for clarification, there are really four of them, two very small agreements, one is called an understanding of cooperation agreement, one is called a water tower license agreement, one is called a poll attachment agreement, and the other is called a general license agreement. Why they have so many, I don't know, Jason and I have been working through this, some of them had tenure terms with different renewal provisions, uh, so we tried to standardize all the renewal provisions, because if you're working with one vendor, they should all come do it at the same time, we thought. So, you have some markups here, uh, I made some more revisions since I talked to Jason at the end of the day, and we'll get those to you before the next meeting, but I think they're finally ready to go.
So is it really four of them, or, because I thought, there's two main ones, and then there are attachments to each other, though, or is it four separate ones?
There's four separate agreements.
So I should really place on file the four different ones?
Right, so, you want me to read them off for you, Jason?
Well, just to make sure I read the names here, so we got the right-of-way, so the two that's not labeled on the thing are just the understanding of cooperation agreement and the water tower license broadband fiber, okay.
Yeah.
Put them in there, okay, I can make, any, any questions on these before I read them off and go with the motions then? All right, I'll do the first one here. Like to make a motion to place on file poll attachment fee agreement between Surf Air Wireless and the City of Oglesby.
Second.
Kern.
Aye.
Wieski.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
If I, the next, if I could do the next one then, um, I'd like to make a motion to place on file right-of-way agreement between Surf Air Wireless and the City of Oglesby.
Second.
Kern.
Aye.
Wieski.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
And the two other ones here, I'd like to make a motion to place on file water tower license for broadband fiber and wireless facilities.
Second.
Kern.
Aye.
Wieski.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
And then finally, I'd like to make a, a motion to place on file understanding of cooperation agreement by the city, by and between the City of Oglesby and Surf Air Wireless LLC.
Second.
Kern.
Aye.
Wieski.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Next is discussion on COVID protocol for City of Oglesby employees. Put something in your packets, and I, after I looked at it this weekend, uh, and went down through it, I think it'd been too much of a hill to climb. People are entrenched, whether they're gonna, uh, get vaccinated or not, this issue has come, become so politicized, it's, uh, you will never convince, uh, people whether they should or should not. So what, what I've done is put together a, uh, that we can talk about, discuss, and hopefully, oh, I'm sorry.
You just.
I can't.
I'll do it, buddy.
Basically, uh, what it amounts to, and it's, it's pretty simple, it's pretty straightforward, it's a COVID, uh, COVID sick leave policy. The City of Oglesby is committed to provide a safe and secure work environment for its employees and to keep our residents safe. To achieve our goals and objectives, the City of Oglesby adopts the following co, policy. One, employees who contract the COVID virus between, virus February 7th through April 30th, 2022, shall be afforded five days of paid admit sick time. Employees who contract the COVID virus, uh, May 1, 2022 through April 30th, 2023, shall be afforded five days of paid admit sick time. Employees who do not have any earned sick leave bank or exhausted their sick time, shall be allowed to take paid sick time slash leave, uh, in advance. Such paid sick shall be deducted from their earned sick time on their anniversary or fiscal date, fiscal year date. An employee who would leave the city would, would have the advanced sick time deducted from their final paycheck. 12 days is the limit, and employee may use paid sick time in advance. And basically, what happens is that, uh, they earn 12 sick days a year. Employees who contact the COVID virus and performance of their duties shall be treated as any other on-the-job injury, which, uh, I don't know how you would prove that an employee caught vi, uh, the, uh, virus on the job. And that the city will review this policy each fiscal year to determine if it should be removed. What came up with this is a couple of reasons, is that we've got, about half of our employees have no sick leave or a very little amount. It's a way to keep people, um, whole through this crisis, and, um, I thought it was a fair way. These people are out there in the, uh, in the field, as well as people that come in here. They're supposed to wear, uh, a mask when they, uh, come in city hall. When our people be at the window, they'll be meeting and wearing a mask, but when you're out in the field, talking with customers and doing work, uh, there's no way that we can mandate that those people wear masks and that they saw, and that they, um, do all the safety things that they're supposed to. And, uh, I thought this was a fair way to come up with to keep our employees safe, our employees whole through this crisis. Uh, I know I upset some people in here, um, right after Christmas, when we had, uh, a rash of people come down with, uh, COVID and were off. Many of them didn't have any sick leave, and, uh, I made the decision to keep these people home. I didn't want them to come to work when they were sick. We got through it, we kept the city working, we kept the lights on, and the streets cleared, so.
Since having read what was originally in the packet and looking at this, I have gone swinging between being incensed and insulted and back to incensed. There, um, a, a statement that you made that you can't mandate that somebody wear a mask when they're, when they're dealing with customers is absolutely false. We have a mask mandate out there by the Governor Pritzker, it, you, they can wear a mask when they're dealing with customers. Giving a five-day sick leave, administrative sick leave, without even bargaining and putting it into their contract and getting something in return for, from it, I think is, is a, is not be, being very fiscally sound with the dollars that we're being entrusted with. And this is not about dollars and cents, it isn't, and it's, and it shouldn't be a politicized issue, this is a worldwide pandemic. It doesn't care what side of the coin you're sitting on, it affects everybody, we all need to be doing the same thing and following the similar orders. I, I don't know of any other city that is doing what you are suggesting that we do here. I truly am against everything that has been written. I say, let them wear a mask, you cannot determine where, you know, when you said that this is a, uh, job injury, it's not a job injury. You, uh, who did the contact tracing to determine where it was caught at? You know, they could have been caught from their spouse, significant other, from their children, from the grocery store, from things that may be considered unsafe behavior, like large family gatherings or going to the bar without a mask on. You, and not that those are bad things, but I'm just saying that it could have been caught anywhere, and then to say that the onus is upon the city to pay for it, 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 it does not sit well with me at all.
I would say, Carrie, I agree with the vast majority of your sentiments, specifically the part about, Mayor, I'm not sure what you refer to when you say masks, not, we can't mandate masks when dealing with people, especially this is a government, public building, we put on the thing there, that if you want to come into the building, that you wear, you wear a mask. I was just happy to hear that we reopened it back up. My biggest, my, one of my biggest issues that I talked about the last meeting was that we are saying it's so unsafe that we need to keep city hall closed from the public, but yet we're not gonna enforce wearing masks inside city hall. That seemed like that didn't make any sense to me, so I don't, I don't think that's a.
I didn't say that.
No, in city hall, we're wearing them.
Do, do, I mean, I'm on the mic now, do you want me to, because that's not true. I mean, I, I've been here the last week, every, every once in a while, and I get reports from people, I know that they don't wear masks in city hall, but, so I'm, but we can talk about that if you want, but that's not true, and that wasn't true up to a, a point, too. After we did our vote last week, it was true for maybe a week, but that's not true, but that wasn't what I was trying to get at. Next thing, um, I completely agree with you on the bargaining thing, and if you follow Tom Melody's, uh, response that he had about this, is we cannot, what was it that we cannot do? We can't mandate things that are.
Like vaccines, we can't mandate a vaccine.
Well, we can't mandate things that are not, uh, that are not part of federal regulations or state regulations unless we bargain for them. But on the other side of the coin, he says you shouldn't be giving anything to people that you don't bargain for, that you want something for. So it's the same thing with giving me these free days, I think that's a mistake. Now, I understand what you're trying to say, you're trying to say that your goal is to make people and things more safe, and I am on board with that.
But, but the goal here is, is for a small subsection of people, not for the City of Oglesby a, as a whole, and, and I guess that's where I'm going at, at as well, where, we're looking more at just, and I shouldn't say just, because I value every city worker. I absolutely do, and I understand exactly what they do, so I value what, what they do every day, but to say that we have to do this to help them get through, well, what about the rest of, I mean, at the expense of our taxpayers? What about them, do they have a say in, in how we spend that money?
I absolutely agree.
Can I, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
And I've sat here and I've listened to this, um, and, and we can, uh, encourage and, uh, and mandate, uh, our employees, uh, wear masks, that they, uh, that they do everything that they, uh, that they need to do. We can't mandate that the public wears a mask.
In our building, yes, we can.
I'm not talking about the building.
You don't have to yell.
When they're out in the field, and most of our people are out in the field, whether they're doing the street work, whether they're keeping the lights on, or whatever they're doing, it isn't just the work that is done in city hall. And, and what we are doing is exposing our people to this.
If they're wearing a mask, they should at least be semi-protected.
Semi-protected.
Well, I'm not.
Well, it's more than semi, it, I, I forget what the single mask percentage of efficacy is.
I'm not, I'm not trying to enforce something that we, that's not already written, I don't, is, is there some type of regulation that says that you have to wear a mask if you're working outside? I mean, the vast majority of our workers, other than city hall, are working outside.
Sure.
I don't, I don't think that's a concern, I'm not really worried about, I mean, yes, you can still get sick, you can do whatever, but I'm, I'm talking about making sure we have good policies, um, and, and not trying to rewrite everything. Um, again, I'm not a crazy mask person, I don't want to be sitting there saying we have to wear a mask, we have to wear a mask, I'm just saying, I, I wanted to make that statement because we were not wearing masks in city hall, that is very clear to me. I was here on Friday signing bills, nobody wore a mask in this entire building, so that is not a true statement, I wasn't gonna bring it up, but if you're gonna challenge me on it, I'm gonna bring it up, that is not true.
Well, you were here at lunch hour.
I was here at lunch hour, and there was three people sitting within three feet of each other, having lunch at the exact same time, and even before the food got here, nobody wore masks. So again, I'm not trying to combat you on this, but if you're gonna make a statement, I'm gonna make sure it's accurate. Anyways, that being said, the bargaining thing, in my opinion, what we should be doing is, just like Tom Melody said, and Dom, I know you say this a lot, we pay lawyers for a reason, they give us a legal recommendation, we should take it. And my recommendation is that we should not be giving any employees any free vacation, I shouldn't say vacation, sick time for this type of thing unless we bargain for it. I'm all for bargaining with them, and we've had a great relationship when we had to negotiate with the union before. If they want to come to the table and say, hey, we'd like you to come up with a couple policies, maybe similar to this, then we could put something in there that we actually have something that makes the city more safe. Maybe there's something that, that we give this to employees that do decide to get a, a vaccine, he even said that in his email. I don't know if that's what we should negotiate for, but what I'm saying is, we shouldn't be giving anything away unless we're gonna bargain for something that actually makes people more safe, that's my argument. Okay? And I'm a little, and, and the other thing you mentioned is why we're here talking about it, we, we should mention why we're here talking about it, because if we don't mention it, we already did vote on something, correct?
And you need three yes votes.
So, the public might not be aware of that, that's why this is actually coming back up. Apparently, we did, under Roberts Rules of Orders, we had a legal quorum at last meeting, and under Roberts Rules of Orders, it states, if you have a majority of the quorum, votes pass. However, apparently, there is a state statute.
Statute.
That overrides that and says, because we are commissioned form of government, whether or not you have a quorum makes no difference, you have to have three votes to pass a policy. So it's, apparently, that's why we're bringing this up, what we passed, and I thought we passed, wasn't binding, and so that's why I'm upset that we don't have enough people here to probably pass it tonight, either way. So really, all we're doing is just doing a discussion and spinning our wheels.
You're, you're right, you're right, you're not gonna give, and, and neither am I. And, and in part of this, uh, and what you have to recognize, uh, through this thing, is that about half of our employees have no sick leave or very little. And, and if we're not big enough to try to take care of our employees, you can talk all you want about being fiscal responsible, but if, unless you take care of your employees and then you be fiscal responsible.
Do the employees agree to work for the wage and benefits that were offered to them?
Yeah, I, I, one of the other things.
I mean, that, that is all part of it, you either agree to what's been offered to you, or you don't, and you, and you try to get something additional. I, I get paid what I get paid, and I get the benefits that I get because I agree to that. Um, I, looking out for half, I don't know that it's even half, half of a small subsection seems to be looking at a small portion when we're here for the entire city.
Dom, one of the other things that.
Just, just, just a minute, you, you know, you're here for the entire city.
Correct.
Our employees work for the entire city.
Yes, they do.
We're here to provide a service and do the best we can, and part of that, if we keep our employees safe and we provide the best services that we can, I think that's what we're here for.
And that has nothing to do with giving them additional sick days.
Dom, one of the things I, I want to mention, I said this last meeting too, and I mean it today, you know, if there's ever a decision you make as mayor that you have to make on the fly for, for whatever reason you think it needs to be, I will never contest that. If you make a decision on the fly, if you're forced to make something, it, what you think is in the best interest of the city and the residents, albeit that's fantastic. The problem with it is, is now that we have a chance to sit here and talk, this is where the concern is, because the same thing with, if, when you say that I won't give or whatever, I don't know if that's necessarily true, I'll give if I see that there's something we're doing to make it more safe. The problem is, we couldn't pass the policy last time, right, or we, we technically didn't pass because we didn't have enough votes, same thing, with this policy you have in front of us, you ain't gonna have the votes to pass it. So what does that mean that we're at right now? I would say with that, and this is where I guess I'm asking the, the attorney, wouldn't it mean we're at what our agreement states with our, um, with our contract currently? And right now, our contract currently does not say that people get free sick days, that is not a thing that exists.
You're absolutely correct, Jason.
You're absolutely right, I don't, I don't dispute that, it also doesn't say that, uh, that we shouldn't advance people's sick days because of what we're going through.
That'd be something that would be bargained for and get something in return.
So I say that.
What, 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 what do you want in return, Carrie?
I don't know, do I want to put holidays at. Do I want to put holidays at, at, paid on the holiday? Do I want to, you know, there are other, there were other items within those, those contracts that really didn't sit well with everybody at the table. We might have some bargaining power with that now.
Here's one of the things, when you say to, to give, here's one of the things I'd be willing to give on, because right now, the things that you said over, over the holidays, when you said you wanted to give those employees those time off, technically and legally speaking, those are not authorized. They, that is not something that you can technically give them. I would be willing to say, hey, as the mayor, you made a decision, and I'm willing to support that because you thought there was an emergency situation and you wanted to allow that. I have no problem with doing that. But for, for me, that means we have to get a policy that says that was only authorized because the mayor thought there was an emergency and that, and that was what we okayed. Other than that, I think we need to go to a policy where it says, no, you can't do that, and force them to come to the bargaining table to ask for something. That's my thought process on it. And I think that's more than fair, because it doesn't go against what you said and what you authorized to give people.
So, so you want to sit and bargain over something while the, while the ship is going down?
Oh, Dom, that's.
That's a little unfair, because the ship did technically go down. We already, we, we had to close City Hall multiple days in a row. The ship sank. All right?
And we, and we rid of the ship.
We, we rid of the ship. We, we reduced services that we gave to the city. So, so in that regards, we already failed. So what I'm saying is, I'm willing to give you, because you gave your word as the mayor to people of what you thought was the right thing to do. I'm willing to support that, but we got to make sure that we have a better plan going forward. And to me, the best plan going forward is not to reward people fiscally for getting sick. You know, I, I want there to be a plan in place, and if there's a way that we're going to give people something more to bargain for them, I want them to come up with something that's going to make the city more safe. And I don't know what that is, if that's vaccines or what it is. I, I don't know. But I don't think we should just be giving them something and the city not get anything in return.
I understand. And I understand your position and, and, you know, give me something that I can look at.
I, I think we need more people here at a, at a council meeting. I don't know what we need to do. If we need to schedule meetings, we actually get people here.
Well, and it, and it is unfortunate that we, that, that we have two people that are missing. And I don't, I'm not looking to debate, I'm not looking to, uh, spend the city's money in a, in a, in a manner that's, that's, that's not fiscal responsible. But I also feel very strongly that we have to address this. This isn't, this isn't something like a, I don't know, someone who has a head cold. This is, this is pretty serious.
It could be potentially serious.
And so what are we not addressing? That, what, what are we not addressing that weren't, that we're not able to keep our people safe?
Because Dom, as I read this here.
Well, if, I'll, I'll tell you what you're not, you know, addressing. These people aren't making, they're making a decent living. If somebody is sick and they don't have sick leave, they're more apt to come to work. If they're sick, stay home. I'll let you use your sick leave. You know, at the, at the last council meeting, it was cited that, uh, this particular, the, you know, company, well, if you get sick to work for them, you can use your sick leave. That, that's, that's good. But many companies that, that their employees deal with the public, that their employees deal with people that, that aren't practicing the protocol like they should be. They've gone this way. I, I think if we protect our employees, the rest of it will kind of fall in place.
Is this what LaSalle or Peru or Ottawa is doing?
Well, I can tell you what Ameren is doing. They're giving their people 10 days.
That's Ameren.
And did they bargain for that?
Million-dollar company.
Let me ask you, did, did Ameren bargain for that, or did they just go ahead and do it?
It was in the bargaining as part of their contract.
You know, I don't know what that means, if they bargain for something else in there. Again, as I said, I'm willing to, there, there is an element of fiscal responsibility, but I'm willing to give more tax, and I think the taxpayers don't have a problem with giving more money if there's a way that we're making a policy that makes things more safe. And as I read everything here, I don't see anything in here that technically makes any employee more safe. If your counterargument though, Mayor, is that, well, by not having this here, we might have people that know they're sick, that know they have COVID, but will come to work anyways. And I say, I have to, I have to write a policy to worry about people like that that would potentially put people in danger?
Jason, take a look. Half of, half of our employees have no or little sick leave. Doesn't have to be just with COVID. COVID is, is one, is, is one little piece of this puzzle.
So wouldn't it be a great, let, let's just say, I'm not, I'm not saying we have to negotiate for, but what if the union came to us and said, well, here's what we'd like to do. We'd like to give it to where you give us two free days and you allow up to five days in the whole negative for people that don't have sick days if they're vaccinated.
I was going to say, and if it's sick days, that they don't have sick days, what happens if somebody fell, broke their ankle, and they had to be off just for a few days with the surgery, but they're allowed to come back because they're a desk job? Now, those few days, are we going to give them administratively for those few days because they don't have sick days?
If you fall and break your ankle on a job, it's workman's comp.
They didn't fall on the job, they were ice skating with their family. They broke their ankle. We're going to give them days off?
If they had sick leave, they had sick leave, they'd be able to use it.
But again, we don't, they don't have sick, so why aren't we worried about that? Or, or somebody gets pneumonia, they're hospitalized.
This does address that.
For pneumonia.
But my thing is, Dom, if, if we were to.
Where does it stop?
Yeah, if we were to bargain for something like that, and then the, the union came back and said, sure, if they're vaccinated, you give that to them. Now, maybe it might not affect that many people, but at least there's a tool and a reason, there's something out there that is attempting to make us have a policy that drives more safety. And again, I'm not sitting here trying to be the guy that says vaccines are the solution to all of our problems because it's, that's not necessarily true either. But, but we need to have some kind of method. We have not done well in the city when it comes to, I mean, we had half the city, nearly half the city employees have COVID within the same week. I'm not saying I know where everybody got sick from, but it'd be foolish to think that we didn't have some kind of spread happening and, and some kind of event, and we reduced services that we had. We had, we were fortunate. I was getting ready to have to call other people in from other communities to cover our electric work if we would have had an emergency, because we didn't have anybody to be able to work.
We probably would.
And, and, but, but again, we're putting ourselves in a situation that we didn't be safe. That's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to say. These policies, in my opinion, do not enhance safety.
Okay. We might as well move on.
We can't vote on anything. We're just literally discussing, it's all we can do, so.
Is there anything under old business? I think we've covered that pretty well.
Uh, just the other thing is, kind of an old business item, there is going to be a net metering policy that we're going to have to do, that's required by law, that we're going to have to update, and I think that's going to take place in March, I believe is when we have to do it.
It has to. Already started on, Jason.
Yeah, so we already have some, some boilerplate stuff that the IMEA gave us, but there's a couple of things that I think we're going to want to add in there that might enhance some safety things going forward for the city. The big thing that the council's going to have to decide, and we're going to have to have a discussion on, there's a couple of things to go, because how you're handling net metering for how you, how you charge people in the future versus how you charge people in the past, do we, do we grandfather the people in, the three, the three ones that we approve for the city for a period of time? Do we grandfather them forever? Or do we not grandfather them at all? You know, that's a discussion we probably, I'm just letting everybody know that that's a discussion we probably have to have here.
Well, there, there's two different policies there, Jason. One is called net metering. The other one is called net billing, where the customer pays for the electricity they take, and you pay the customer for, for the electricity they generate that goes back into the system. Verbal tells me, because I talked to Verbal about this in relation to Oglesby specifically, that you already essentially do a net billing system. So she thinks it would be much easier to continue to head on in that direction, which is much fairer to all of your customer classes over time, because she said you're eventually going to have to get there anyway. And that's essentially what you're doing now. It will have to be tweaked, but she wants to move towards a net billing.
Where the complication, there's two things that we have in our net metering and net billing policy that are not authorized anymore by law. Number one of them is we can't limit people. Right now, we, we have it limited where it's 2% of our entire load, that, and we, and we could say no, that you can't do anymore.
You can, Jason, limit them to their average usages over a period of time, because you can't have somebody come in and cover their whole yard with solar panels and start selling power to the city.
Well, it's not so much a concern, well, it's not so much a concern right now, because for us to even hit that wall, we would need another 35 people in the city to do it. Right now, there's a total of three. So that's not going to be an issue, but that's one change that we can't limit. The other thing is, right now, the, the program we have is actually very beneficial to people if you're looking to just to save the most amount of money, because we actually have a one-for-one cost basis of what we give people for that. Going fo, in the future, you actually have to physically pay people. If they generate more than what they, than what they use, you have to give them a check. Right now, under our statute.
A credit, Jason.
A cri, well.
It's, it's a credit.
Because we give, we give a credit now. We give a credit now.
It's a credit, though, Jason. It's trued up, I think, maybe once a year, but it's a credit. You're not going to be writing checks out to customers who, who do that.
My understanding is that, that if, that if, under the new rules, that if they were to generate more than they always use, you would have to chew up and give them some kind of amount at some point. The one we have now, it is not like that. They could generate 10 times more power than they use, and they only ever get a credit, it will never be able to get them a cash.
And you don't have any choice about that, Jason, because they changed the law.
Correct.
It, it is going to have to be done.
The difference is, we have three people that are on the old one, and do we say, no, you don't get that benefit anymore? Or do we grandfather them in? And that's, all I'm saying is that's a conversation that we need to have here, that we do have some choice to do.
Well, I will do my best with Verbal's help to generate a new net billing policy for you, which is what she recommends, and then I'll present it to the board, and you can talk about it and see if you have questions.
Sounds good.
I talked to Dom about this last week, and we already started down that road.
Public comments. Carrie?
Um, let's see, the fire department had 17 callouts this last month, and the ambulance had 67 with 13 of those being transferred. The police department would like to remind everybody about snow and parking, that when there's going to be two or more inches out there, that they should have their cars off of the road. In January, they issued 33 citations, and in February, 27? Is that right? 27 already? Um, just so, we don't want to be writing tickets, so please get the cars off the road. Running, Randy Lenninger is going to be doing a 40-hour SRO training in Peoria next week. This is for a school resource officer training, so she'll be getting some additional things going forward. And I'm very happy to announce that Jack Barnes is going to be the, was the Officer of the Month for January, so congratulations, Officer Barnes. And last and finally, I'd like to announce that this will be my last council meeting. I'm going to be respectfully declining my position, and I wish my successor well.
You're resigning?
Yes.
Well, thank you for your service, so, and I wish you'd reconsider, even though we disagree sometimes that we need, that doesn't bother me. I'm not always on target.
Yeah, I don't even want to give my report now, I'll be honest. I'd rather, I'd rather talk about you reconsidering that, hopefully in the future. That is unfortunate. I think you, you bring a lot to this, this table and a lot of, a lot of good discussions, and I, I, that's.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
I hope you reconsider. So, the street department, obviously hauling a lot of snow, they did a really great job moving stuff. As a matter of fact, we had so much snow downtown, we did some, some work actually, you know, getting the bucket truck out, not the bucket truck, the scoop out, and, and getting snow out of downtown so they could actually use the sidewalks and still park. So that's how much snow we've been having lately. The other thing I have is, we do have some engineering estimates happening right now. We've given our list to, to our engineers that we think for our priorities that we want to get. We want to see how much we think things are going to cost. The concern is that if costs of materials have gone up, obviously we'll be able to get a little less street work than we want to get done. So we'll get that report back, and then we'll see what we can all get done. That's all I have.
I don't have much. Anybody's driven downtown, the Reisner Building started to come down today. The contractor will clean up the bricks and et cetera that fell on the property to the west. I just want to congratulate the city workers. They did a great job in blowing the snow and cleaning up Walnut Street. I want to thank the IBW for hosting a seminar on solar safety. From what I understand, it was well-received. And we need to look at all the solar installations that we had to make sure that they were installed properly. And Carrie, we, we just talked a minute. You're going to schedule a date for the ambulance?
I'll probably pass that to somebody else.
Okay.
I'll contact Kathy and let her know that she can at least get the initial meeting set up.
Okay. And passing, and I'll echo Jason's comment. I wish you'd reconsider, reconsider.